Monday, March 26, 2018 addition to the Town of Sturbridge zoning board of appeals. An action-packed evening. So, on the agenda tonight, 6:30 we'll open the meeting which we have, review and approve the minutes of March 14, 2018. 6:35 PM, there'll be a continuation of public hearing for a special permit, 300 Clark Road Extension. Peter O. Bogliazzo?
Bogliazzo, close.
Bogliazzo, welcome, sir. The applicant is requesting a special permit for an eight-foot by 12-foot addition onto an existing dwelling. At 6:55, there's a continuation of public hearing, special permit, One River Road. Hadley Zabinski? The applicant is requesting a special permit for approval of a change in use for the property from the existing retail facility to a luxury full-service pet daycare center lodging, training, and grooming facility. At 7:30, there's a continuation of public hearing, special permit for number 234 and 236 Haynes Street, that's Route 15. Petrogas Group, New England Incorporated, the applicant is requesting a special permit approval for the extension of a pre-existing non-conforming structure and use. And if that's not enough for you, at 7:55, we have a determination, number 47 Seneca Lane, George and Rebecca Condillis? Condillis?
Condillis.
All right, thank you, Jean.
You're welcome.
Raise of a single-family home and garage and rebuild on new foundation. At some point, we'll get to all the new business, I almost said business, and then we'll adjourn. So, that being said, let's kick off this with the review and approval of the Wednesday, March 14, 2018, meeting minutes. Have the members had an opportunity to review said meeting minutes? Any questions, comments, concerns, changes, edits? Liz, you've got to have something.
I'm going to confess that I haven't read the minutes fully.
Okay. Well, we'll absolve you of your sin. Michael?
I have no issues down here.
Fidelis?
Nope.
Liz is reading. Thomas?
I'd like to make one small change on the second, on page two, the second bullet point.
Page two?
Is this proposal increasing the nonconformity? And it says here, if so, then it is more detrimental to the neighborhood. I'm suggesting we take that for a beat out. It does seem to increase the nonconformity, but I don't see that it's, at this time, make a judgment that it's more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Where were you reading from?
Bullet point two, at the bottom.
I think it should read, is this proposal increasing the nonconformity? If so, then is it more detrimental to the neighborhood?
This is, it is.
I just don't want to leave that judgment in there.
I agree with you. Judgment is bad. Okay. Liz, I know you're working diligently.
Yeah. I don't think so.
No, you're outside?
Yeah.
Okay. There being only but one suggested change, can I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes of March 14, 2018? So moved? Seconded. Okay. Tom seconded. All those in favor? Nobody opposed? Okay, very good. All right, then I guess we will open the public hearing on the special permit for 300 Clark Road Extension, and I will turn it over for the notice to my cohort, Ms. Liz Banks. Thank you, Liz.
You're welcome. In accordance with the provisions of Mass General Laws, Chapter 40A, Section 11, the zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing at the Center Office Building located at 301 Main Street on March 21, 2018, at 6:35 PM on the application of Peter O. Bogliazzo, 96 Canterbury Lane, Long Meadow, Mass. The applicant is requesting a special permit pursuant to Chapter 20, Section 20.05 of the zoning bylaw to expand, change, or alter a pre-existing nonconforming use and structure for the property located at 300 Clark Road Extension, Sturbridge, Mass. The applicant is proposing an eight-by-12 addition onto the existing house. A copy of the application may be inspected at the office of the town clerk during regular business hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on this petition should appear at the time and place designated Sturbridge Zoning Board of Appeals.
Okay. Thank you, Liz.
You're welcome.
All right, so it's 6:30, a little after 6:30. Ideally, we have about 20 minutes to kick this off, to stay on schedule. So, why don't you get us started? Tell us, introduce yourselves, please. Speak up in the microphone and give us the who, what, when, where, why, and how of this project, and be as detailed and as descriptive as possible. Thank you.
Okay, before we get started, I want to, Jalbert from Jalbert Engineering, representing the client at 300 Clark Road Extension. But before we do that, I would like to present to the board the two orders that were issued in the Southridge News for the permit tonight, and then the certified butters list of the butters in Sturbridge, also the abutting towns.
Okay. Thank you.
Before we proceed, I'd like to see if you have it in your packet, the plans for the existing proposal, where the existing proposal was actually rather small, where they're going in with an eight-by-12 addition on the existing building, which is basically looking at the print, which is on the easterly side or the right-hand side of the building, which is shaded in gray. This addition will be used for an additional bedroom and closet space for the bedroom itself. The actual addition is only 96 square feet. What has actually taken place here is that it's unusual in that the building itself actually is only 584 square feet. So, if you take the addition, you're coming up with basically 670 square feet, which is actually less than the proposed, or should I say, the minimum requirement in the town, which is 750 square feet for an existing structure. So, we're still actually smaller, but the intensity on the building itself, as far as the footprint is concerned, goes from 16.86% to 18.93%, which that exceeds the 15% threshold. However, as far as intensifying the nonconformity of the site itself, I feel is negated on the fact that the building itself does not even come close to the existing 750-foot requirement. As far as the structure, the structure is serviced by Town Sewer, which is in the rear of the building, and also a private well, which is on the easterly side of the building itself. So, the building itself will have no changes in that the addition will be actually the eight-by-12, but it'll only require two piers. So, they are not going to go in with a full foundation. The excavation will be minimum. They will be on sonotubes, and it will be typical to the existing structure. So, the footprint and everything will be exactly as is. The roofline and everything on the building, which we did, we took the liberty to take pictures of it to...I don't know if I can find them. Let's see. I'm sorry, I forgot I'm in the packet. But the actual picture, I'll go with you just to show you what it is, is that the building itself, the elevation for the building, if you look at the lake facing the building itself, this is the frontage of the building right here, and on your left-hand side, that's the projection for the eight-by-12, which you see is very minimal relative to, from viewing from the lake itself. The thing is, I'll just show you what it looks like here. This is from the lake looking at the elevation, the view. The building itself, there's the addition on the other side right here, which is the eight-by-12. It's very, very minimal there.
So, on this picture, Mr. Jalbert, where is this addition going?
The addition's going right there.
Going right there.
Is that a window?
Wait, we'll go through that.
Okay.
Going around the building on the other side, which is this side over here, there's absolutely no changes. It stays exactly as is. That's the other side of the building right there. There's no changes. It's exactly as shown. The back of the building, which you look is where the roadway is, is that's the L on the back. This is the door in the back. There's no changes on that side. This side here, there's absolutely no changes. The other side, which we're talking about, is the addition, which the addition itself is actually going to take place from this point here to here, which there's two windows here on the building. These two windows will be moved forward eight feet, and the building will come along this line to here, up to here.
It's going to flush with the wall.
Right, and it'll be matching this, and the roofline will match. So, the roofline is matching, the side is matching, everything is matching.
Okay, what, how many, how many?
That's eight feet. If you look at your plans, you can see it's right here. It's eight-by-12. And the two windows are right in here, and they're moving right to there. So, there's, so architecturally and visually, nothing's changing, really.
All right. So, it's a pre-existing, nonconforming structure, right?
That is correct.
And the only increase in the nonconformity is the lot coverage. Is that right?
That is correct.
And the lot coverage is only being increased because of this project by a little over 2%. Is that right?
That's correct.
There are no other issues, no other nonconformities, nothing?
No. There's no other, there's no other utility impacts to the town. The electrical is not going to change. The sewer connection is public sewer. That's not going to change. The well is existing well. That's not going to change.
Okay.
Nothing will be changing.
Very good. So, is that, is that, can I open it up to the board for questions?
Sure.
All right. Thomas?
I'm assuming you heard back from all the neighbors. You had another point which would be a variance with respect to the side yard. You've got one where it's only six feet now, and then you're going to put another point in along that same side. It's going to be only 11 feet, and that's a change. But my assumption is that you've heard from the neighbors, and you haven't heard from the neighbors, that they don't care.
Correct. Nothing from the neighbors at all. We notified all the neighbors in all the abutting towns, and we see nothing for negative comments.
No protests, no picketing, nothing like that?
Nothing at all.
Okay.
And you're suggesting, too, that the approach in conformity on the size of the building pretty much offsets any kind of nonconformity that exists. You're suggesting that.
Right. You've got to remember, the existing structure itself presently is less than five feet from the property line.
Right, yes, I understand.
But we're putting this addition now, which is about 11 and 1/2 feet from the property line.
Yeah, that I understand.
So, we're over two and a half times, basically, of what's there now.
Yeah, okay.
Conforming.
And what I'm suggesting is that the fact that the building is going to be more to size.
It's getting closer to conformity. That's correct.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm good. Liz Banks?
Okay, so, in the application, it says the existing dwelling has an area of only 512 square feet, but on your plan, it has an area of 584 square feet, and I just was wondering what...
What's happening there is if you look at, you're adding in the porch and everything, which is the footprint. It's not a habit.
This has the house, the shed, the concrete slab, deck, stairs.
It's 584, yeah. Go ahead. What were you saying now?
So, the 584 includes the house, the shed, the con, well, it only, only does not include the shed, the slab, the deck, or the stairs.
Correct. It's just the house.
Yeah. But there's a difference between what was on the application and what's on the plan.
What was the application?
512 square feet.
That's maybe erroneous. It should be corrected. It should be 584.
Should be 584.
All right, that being the case, how does it impact the mathematics on the rest of the plan, as far as lot coverage and all of that?
It doesn't change.
Actually, it says 584 on the...
It says 584?
On the plan, but not on the application.
On the application. All right. So, the application ought to be amended to represent 584 square feet on paragraph nine. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. Anything else, Liz?
302, do you own 302 also? Okay. Because, yeah, it was not easy to find, because I guess you have a driveway, not like a road in front, and it wasn't plowed.
It's actually a right-of-way.
Right-of-way, yeah.
You found it? That's quite the challenge, right?
Well, it was challenging. One of your neighbors had one of those new fire, that the fire department put out, those weird little red signs. So, we were close, and we looked, and we figured it out, but like it wasn't plowed all the way, so we didn't go all the way down. But I think that was my only...
The town's only required to plow, I believe, the paved roads. The right-of-ways is up to the owner.
Right. I'm just making, yeah, I was, I'm sort of like just verifying that I got the right place. I think that...
Do you, are you confident on what you saw?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Fidelis?
I got an aerial view of where they actually are relative to the other buildings and everything, which is in your packet, so...
Yeah, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay.
Fidelis, any questions, comments, concerns?
Just a comment. Maybe I'm just tired and reading it wrongly, but in the application, Part B, Number 10, says the building addition will not increase the nonconformity of the structure, nor increase any of the setbacks. So, I mean, it's not conforming already, right?
Yeah, and so, so did you mean to state that it's going to increase the nonconformity negligibly, or something along those lines?
No, what it is, what I actually said in that statement is that it has not increased the nonconformity of the structure, nor increased the setbacks, which means we're not, say, going less with the setbacks. We're staying where they are. Nothing's changing.
What increases the nonconformity of the lot coverage?
Correct. Only the lot coverage, nonconformity, that's all it is.
Okay. Fidelis, are you happy with that answer?
Okay.
Mr. Young?
I have no questions or comments.
And neither do I. Okay. Is there any, open it up to the public who's there? Is anybody here on behalf or in support or opposition of the?
This is 300 Clark Road.
300 Clark Road? No?
I don't want to go through.
Yeah, I'm going to do that right after I...All right, so, we have some correspondence. There's your butters list. We have a February 2, 2018, some memo from the Conservation Commission to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Please be advised that all taxes, a license permit may be released. From the Finance Director. Okay. We have a memo dated March 14, 2018 from town planner, Ms. Jean Boobon, who is, oh, you know what I never did? I never did introductions.
I know.
Who is in, oh, thank you for reminding me.
You're welcome.
Who's in attendance tonight, so if you wouldn't mind giving us an opus.
Yes. So, the application did go out to all staff for review, as the chair noted, and no major concerns were noted from anyone. The fire department had specific recommendations for needing smoke detector information before the building permit will be issued, and that the house number be visible. But other than that, there was no objections from staff for the issuance of the special permit, and I also have no concerns with the proposal. I think it's a very negligible increase in lot coverage. I think that the applicant was very careful in planning the addition to make sure that he wasn't overdoing for the site, and that he's taking great care to add increased infiltration to the site.
Thank you. From the Conservation Department, dated March 8, 2018, "I previously met with the project proponent to discuss this project, and the Sturbridge Conservation Commission has recently received a notice of intent for the proposed house addition. The applicant is proposing a small addition of the structure, which will be located within the jurisdictional buffer zone of resource areas subject to protection under the Wetlands Protection Act and the Sturbridge Wetlands Bylaws. The addition is proposed outside of our 50-foot no new structure setback. In addition, the structure will be located on pilings, which will minimize impacts to soil disturbance. The applicant will also, is also proposing a 36-inch drip strip to infiltrate roof runoff from the addition in a portion of the existing house. Appreciate the applicant's efforts to incorporate design elements to reduce impacts within the buffer zone. Based on the scope of the project, I do not anticipate any concerns with the project," and that was from Rebecca Gendrow. Okay. You know what? I apologize to everybody on TV and in attendance at the meeting, but usually we kick off this thing with introductions, because the fate, your fate is in our hands, and you probably need to know, you know, who you're talking to. So, I'll kick it off. I'm Kevin Kelly.
I'm Tom Earls.
Liz Banks?
Fidelis, I'm Obayke.
Mike Young.
And of course, we have the distinguished Ms. Jean Boobon, our town planner, and not-so-new anymore, but absolutely fabulous, Rebecca, Rebecca.
Decorsy.
Okay, thank you. All right. So, can we go ahead, and everybody feel comfortable closing the public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
And I'll second it.
Okay. All those in favor? All right. So, the public hearing on this special permit is now closed.
Something I can prepare, prepare something for you, in order to, we have to first do the finding.
If that's what you'd like to do?
I'll do it.
I'll turn it over to you.
In the matter of the request for a special permit by Peter Bogliazzo of Long Meadow at property at 300 Clark Road Extension, to add an eight-by-12 addition to the house according to the plan by Jalbert Engineering dated 2818, the board finds that the addition will not be more detrimental to the neighborhood. And that's the finding. That's the first thing you have to decide.
All right. So, the motion on the table is, you're making a motion to find that this is not more detrimental?
Yes.
Shouldn't you be adding in accordance with the Section 24.09a through E, find the Section 20.05 of the Sturbridge bylaws?
In this case, I don't know if that's necessary. That was my question on that. Jean, do you have an opinion on that, in this, with respect to this size, this change, this?
Yeah, it still falls under the same criteria. So, sorry, when you asked, I meant you didn't have to recite each one, item by item, but you should reference them.
Okay, with reference to 2409?
So, referenced. Okay.
Is that okay?
Just, yeah, to add that section.
Yes.
Yeah.
You approach her. That's great. Okay, so, all in favor of the motion as read by Mr. Tom Earls, as amended by Ms. Liz Banks? All in favor?
If you get a second, I'll second it in case we didn't.
Okay.
Okay. Any opposed? All right. The determination is that it does not, is not more detrimental to the neighborhood.
All right. In view of the finding, I move that a special permit be granted for the construction of an eight-by-12 room as described in the plan, subject to all requirements by the town departments with respect to health, safety, and conservation. And we would put in the reference to the plan, so are we?
Put the...
Yep. Let's get the plan number, the date. Who submitted the plan in there?
With respect to plan by Jalbert Engineering, Plan Number 18021, dated 2818. Do we also include anything about incorrect figures in the application?
No, well...
Well, the amendment to the application, when I think Fidelis was talking about the 584 square feet, we made an amendment for the record that would be included in the meeting minutes.
Just sign the application after.
This initial.
Okay.
Yep.
We'll sign it after.
All right.
That's the motion.
That's the motion, yeah. Liz?
I would just add that any must abide by any rulings of any board or town officials. I forget.
All permits?
This is, subject to all requests by town departments with respect to health, safety, and conservation.
Yes, it was.
You've already said that?
He did.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's all right.
Okay.
Checks and balances.
I'm good with that.
Alright. So, we have a motion on the floor.
I'll second it.
All those in favor? Any opposed? No? Motion is, special permit is granted. Go forth and prosper, and best of luck to you, sir. How could they not be? They're in one bedroom now. There you go. Okay, it's all about the kids.
It's all it's about, believe me.
Oh, I know.
Took top-down, very little one-bedroom apartment.
Alright. Well, thank you, Burton, and good luck to you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Alright.
Oh, do you want your pictures here, or...
Yeah, I'll take those.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Oh, what's the next one?
Next, next up, Liz, is, um, special permit for One River Road. Do you have the notice?
Oh, I do.
Yeah, you're ready?
Hold on. Yep.
Whenever you're ready, Liz.
Alright, in accordance with the provisions of Mass General Laws, Chapter 40A, Section 11, the Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at the Center Office Building, located at 301 Main Street, on Wednesday, March 21st, 2018, at 6:55 PM, on the application of Hadley Zabinski of Charlton, Mass. The application is requesting a special permit pursuant to Chapter 20, Section 20.05 of the zoning board, of the zoning bylaw, to allow a change in nonconforming use of structures for the property located at One River Road. The application is proposing a change in use from the existing retail facility to luxury full-service pet daycare, lodging, training, and grooming facility. A copy of the application may be inspected at the town office of the town clerk during regular business hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on this petition should appear at the time and place designated. Sturbridge Zoning Board of Appeals.
Thank you, Liz. Well, good evening.
Good evening.
Please go ahead and introduce yourselves.
Certainly, I'm Hadley Zabinski, the applicant.
And I'm Jay Galant, the architect for the project. We don't have, unfortunately, we don't have the...
We're missing...
Design engineers here.
We missed them on timing. I think that they closed their office at four o'clock, and we missed them, and we don't have cell phone numbers for them, so... Right, so I'll explain to the board that, as you know, we were having a question if we were going to have a quorum for the special permits. And so, we had contacted all the applicants, as some of them were traveling from New Hampshire. And then, Fidelis called and said he was able to change his work schedule, and that we would, he would be here, and we would have a quorum. So, we scrambled to call everybody, but I could not reach... Burton Engineering. Peter from Burton Engineering. So, Jay is the project architect, and I can say from experience in working with Ms. Zabinski, she's very well-versed in her own projects, so I feel comfortable that she can, between her and Jay, she can probably answer everything that the board may ask.
Okay, that's great. So, um... Yeah, I guess, lay it out for us, lead us by the nose, walk us through.
Okay.
What is the, what is the nonconformity? Walk us through the whole thing.
Certainly, be kind to me, though, this is my first time ever coming to...
Oh, you're doing great so far. And we are very kind, by the way.
Oh, thank you, I've noticed that.
Not hearing different, are you?
Okay, no, I'm not.
Good, alright.
So, what I would like to do is, again, I'm purchasing the building, and representing the seller is Gary Griffin, who is the property manager and real estate agent for the seller. So, he's here with us today, as well as my real estate agent. And we're in the process of, the purchasing process. And what I am trying to open is to take this building as it stands, in its current shape, and not change any of the outdoor, like facade of the building or anything, just the interior, and start up a business that will be similar to what the Barkwood Inn runs on Route 20 in Charlton. Um, that's probably our most close, closely-related competitor. So, it's high-end boarding, grooming, daycare, and training facility. And we will have some customer flow in and out of the parking lot, and utilizing River Road and Haynes, and coming off of 84. We won't have a, well, I should say, our capacity will be four, at maximum capacity, will be 40 daycare dogs a day, so that's in and out for 40 customers a day, as well as 40 boarding dogs. And typically, those are only once-a-week customers, in and out. And then, grooming throughout the day, and then training classes, probably in the evening and on weekends. So, how else can I lead you on this?
A lot of dogs.
It is a lot of dogs. I hope so. It's actually a lot less than what our competitors have capacity for in their buildings, so we're doing a little bit different philosophy, a little more high-touch, little more, um, lower ratios of staff to dogs, so...
So, more personal experience?
Mm-hmm, exactly. More supervision.
And this requires a change, and I mentioned nonconformity, that was dumb on my part. This is, this requires a, um, a change in zoning type?
Change in use, right. Yep.
Alright. So, um, that, that pretty much it for your...
Can I just add about the site? So, one of Hadley's most important parts of Hadley's business model is so that the dogs will have a lot of playtime outside, and she's gonna create... Those of you that are familiar with the site, there's quite a bit of, quite a bit of land there, a few outbuildings, but there's a decent amount of land that's just gonna create four different outdoor play areas.
Right, there's... Yep, there's two daycare play areas that are about 2,000-ish square feet, and technically, five boarding-run areas that are about 12 feet wide by about 30 feet long or so, as well as numerous pet relief areas for in and outdoor. So, I'm trying to, what I'm trying to create is a kind of enclosed area so that the dogs are isolated within a fenced-in area. They don't leave that fenced-in area, they don't see outside that fenced-in area. You can't see them, you know, they're, they're within this enclosed area. And that would be the only area that would, so I don't, I'm not... I'm trying to, the idea behind it is, one, safety for both the dogs and neighbors, et cetera, and, two, is containing any kind of waste pickup, et cetera, so that it's in one enclosed area.
The round building, is that part of that property as well?
That is.
What's happening with that?
So, at this time, I don't have a direct plan for the round building or that little red building. I hope that in my future plan for the property that I will come up with a use that is continuous with my, my organization, and find a use for that. But right now, I'm just gonna keep on maintaining it. Needs a little work to maintain it right now, so I need to do some fixing of it first. But I don't have an exact plan of what I'm going to do with that really neat funky building.
Okay. Alright, thank you. Is there anything that you want to add to this, sir?
Aside from the, aside from putting out the opportunities that Hadley's gonna create on the outside, with the inside, inside's gonna be renovated pretty much completely to suit the needs of the business. It's gonna be brought up to some standards that it's not up to now, because it was a, you know, retail business that worked fine for many years. Now, you know, what we're doing is triggering a few different upgrades, and Hadley's gonna do all those.
Like a sprinkler system.
For example. And, and some upgrades to toilet rooms. It'll be good employee facilities, as well as good facilities for the dogs. Seems like a really positive thing for the property.
Yeah, maybe this is a silly question, I just don't know how to, how to ask it, but, I mean, it's 40 dogs, right?
Mm-hmm.
And you mentioned a doggy relief area?
Mm-hmm.
That's a lot of relieving. And, and I'm just curious as to, and I know nothing about this line of business.
That's okay.
How do you contain the odor? The drainage, the septic, doggy septic?
So, best practices in, in pet, professional pet facilities these days, the recommendation is to utilize outdoors artificial grass over crushed stone. And so, we put down about six inches of crushed stone on top of regular soil and the astroturf or artificial grass. And typically, the recommendation is to use a product called Zeophill, which is like, it's an enzymatic product that takes the structure of the urine and adheses to the ammonia so that you don't have the smell. And then, what happens is, when it does rain on it, it releases that ammonia in a different chemical format, so it's not, you no longer have the odor. So, that's how we deal with the liquid waste. We can also rinse it down on a regular basis with additional kind of enzymatic odor cleaners as needed, but the Zeophill is the, is the recommended, and it's like, comes in like a pellet form, a very tiny pellet form, and you rub it into the, into the astron.
A doggy Riddex.
Yeah, pretty much, sort of, I guess you could say that, yep. And then, for the solid waste, we pick that up immediately because of concerns of any kind of disease containment, et cetera, because dogs do fun things with waste. So, we bag it immediately, and we have a whole process of how we bag it, and then it gets taken away by a commercial waste.
And that's done by the employees? And the employees are, will be trained to be on top of it?
Mm-hmm, yes, you have to. And the reason why is, I don't know if you've ever had the experience of a really fun dog that, and this is just not a fun discussion, but some dogs like to eat other dogs' poop, or they eat their own, or they roll in it, and so, it's, it's not fun, but it's critical. So, the second that one is released, you have to be on top of it. It's part of our, part of our, our policies.
You also have a high ratio, right?
Yeah. So, I have one employee per 10 dogs. So, it's pretty easy to spot that.
Four employees, so four employees are dedicated to maintaining a hygienically...
Yes, safe, hygienic, exactly, yep.
Smell-free environment.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Alright.
And then, there's a sprinkling of employees in there, too, that will be helping with additional cleaning, et cetera, so those will be...
So, no poop will be left behind?
No poop left behind.
Alright. I'll open it up to the board, Michael?
You actually already answered my questions. You're really on your game tonight.
Wiring minds want to know about poop.
No, I'd just like to state for the record, it looks like a great project that's been a property that's been vacant for way too long, and I think that's an excellent use for it. And the plans look great.
Thank you.
Fidelis, you get a lot of experience in this area, right?
Absolutely not. Yeah, but, but one thing I would say is, you know, I agree with Mike. I think, you know, I drive past that building every Saturday on my way to the recycle center. And, you know, I think it's good to see that there is a plan to, you know, actually use it for something. That's one. And secondly, I do drive by, or drive past the, um, the day, the doggy daycare on Route 20 on my way to Worcester, and I've, I've never smelled anything. You know, and it's, it's, it's a large one, you know? So, definitely, there are ways which we don't know, but we should just explain on how to contain smell and, and all that, so...
So, when you drive by, are your windows down, and you're going real slow? Are you driving like 80 miles an hour?
Well, you know, you can go past 50 miles an hour there, so, you know, so...
Liz, you're a cat lover, what do you think?
No, I think it's a good project, it's in a good area for that purpose. I mean, there's no real neighbors around to be bothered if, for some reason, the dogs were barking out there or something. No, as long, as long as all the concerns, like the DPW had eight concerns. I think you've addressed them, but I'm not 100% sure. Conservation.
Yes, can I just add? I believe all the concerns have been addressed by the applicant, yes.
Okay. So, I don't have any other questions then for that, because it seems you adjusted, you gave us another set of plans with the adjusted parking?
Yes.
So, um, I think, seems like a good project and a good area for that project.
Thank you.
Well, you gave me the poop, so I have no questions. At this point, anyway. I have some percolating, but, uh...
How long does it take to, are the people gonna bring their dogs inside each morning? Or are you gonna have enough staff to go out and get them all? Is that, that would, there were so many questions on the, on the traffic suggestion, that the quicker you can get a dog out of a car into the building and get the car out of there, the better off you are.
Right, so I've designed, so, kind of my history with this is I've been a customer of doggy daycares throughout the country. I've been traveling with my dog for, on and off, for the last 20 years. Different dogs, I should say, not the same dog, unfortunately. And I've designed my interior, which Jay has put up here, to really appeal to the, the day customer, to be very fast turnaround. So, I've created kind of pass-through areas where, if you're a regular customer, all that you need to do is, to start with, is to walk in the door, and you can put your dog in one of the pass-through areas so that we can process that dog very quickly and get you out of the parking lot, probably with turnaround with about a minute and a half. But, and that's again, if you're a regular, and we know you, and you walk in and you say, "Hey, Tom, okay, see ya, thank you, thanks for dropping off Fido, we gotcha," and that's it. That's the entire process for check-in for a regular. And most daycares for dogs are regular customers, where they either come in five days a week, or three days a week, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, or something like that. So, our turnaround should be very quick. In, if we find that that's not quick enough, then our plan is to add some kind of valet service, where we go out and go get the dog out of the car. So, it will all depend on how quickly and how well our flow is working, because appeal to customer services for a daycare is how fast can you get my dog out of the car, because I gotta go to work? You know, that's, that's the truth about it. So, whatever we need to do to make that happen so that our customers are pleased, that's what we're gonna do.
And the period of time when they're typically dropped off is, what, from 6:30 in the morning or 6 until 9?
We're planning on 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM to have the reception desk open. That's typical, the heaviest hours of drop-off. There may be an exception where somebody asks to be dropped off at 6:30 in the morning, but the norm for people for drop-off is about 7:00 AM, usually around heavy commuting time. Most people are dropping off on their way to work, and then picking up after work.
Okay. I wanted to ask, when is, where is the nearest house? The nearest house is up the hill? Is it the one across the street, or on the same side?
It's across the street, and from sightline from the front door, you can't see the, the house, because the, the berm of, on the road kind of goes up a little bit, so they're, they're kind of not quite level, it kind of drops down a little bit. So, we're quite well-shielded from noise and, and visual blocking from sight.
And what kind of fencing is around the play areas which, which are up toward that berm? What kind of fencing is that?
So, I'm going to start with, anything that's visible is going to be vinyl, as much as I can afford to do on that side, I'm gonna do vinyl, but if I can't afford to do that whole thing in vinyl, I'm gonna do stock, wood stock. That's not staccade, thank you. Like stockyard, no, that's not right.
How high is that?
Um, six feet.
Six feet, huh?
So, it'll be closed, it's not gonna have any openings in it, it's not chain link, it's completely visually closed. So, that will help with both sound and sight.
Yeah, that's about all I ran across was the question of traffic. And I know that was still a question, but it sounded like you've got enough room to do it, whatever you have to do. I'm all set with that, then. Thank you.
Thank you.
No, I would just like to say also that I have a lot of friends with dogs and they all complain that they have to go board them far away. There's nothing around here.
Exactly.
Nothing in Sturbridge or close by.
So send them all down, because that's, that's the plan.
Are there any restrictions on the, on the, on the breeds?
No, not at this time. I think I'm going to start with the restrictions potentially. I'm not allowing intact male and female dogs that are within breeding age at this time. I may change that, but to start with, I'm not quite there. Nobody has convinced me that I should make exceptions. But breed, breed exceptions, it'll be based on temperament. We do initial evaluations of breed type of any kind of dog. And you could have the most wonderful golden retriever that, that may not be suitable for doggy daycare boarding. And you may have, you know, vice versa, the pit bull that is phenomenal and passes a temperament test with lion collars. So we're not restricting by breed.
So this is not a doggy hotel, right? That's, that's different?
It's both, actually. So we're going to do daycare and we're going to do boarding, doggy hotel.
So you would have a member of staff on site 24 hours?
Yes, correct.
I was impressed by your staff charting here. There's a lot of people.
Yes.
Working here.
Yes.
There are going to be four on most of the time and two all, two all night long.
Correct. And probably more than that once we get up to capacity.
And training.
Yes, and training, right. But even, even as a, again, as we hit maximum capacity, I, I want to have the ratio stay very, very low. So I may have people working part-time coming in for hours, half a day kind of hours. And that's my goal, to be able to allow like three times a day to come in and have as much staff as I can possibly have. Because that's part of my philosophy, high touch. Low ratio, high touch.
This is quite a proposal.
Thank you.
I didn't know this much about dogs.
I have more if you, if you would like.
What about barking? Dogs bark. Forty dogs bark.
So not all 40 dogs are outside at one time. We look at a ratio again, best practice is that dogs, having dogs all in a play area all day, together all day long, isn't actually very healthy for a dog. You look at trying to break up a dog's day in thirds so that a third of their day is physical play. And organized physical play reduces loud, obnoxious barking. So the more engaged that your dog is in an activity, the less that they're going to be trolling that fence and barking at a squirrel and being obnoxious, because they're focused on something that you're doing for an activity. And an activity can be something as small as having a balloon and having a couple of balloons being bounced around and, and just entertaining the minds of your dog. So the thirds of the day are physical activity, mental activity, where you're kind of working on training. And even just things like, you know, group sits and down and things like that. Sit, down, stay, come, things, basic things like that, basic manners. It works their brain. So again, you work on that third that's physical, third that's mental, and then third is rest. So what we do is we actually rotate the dogs. So about every 45 minutes or so, they're changing situations. So one dog may start the day with something like a puzzle toy. And then they move into the daycare area for 45 minutes and then they move outside for 45 minutes and come back in. So it's a lot of rotation to keep the dogs moving and not bored. Because a bored dog and an unentertained dog is a loud, obnoxious dog. So that's how we prevent that. Right. And if we do find a dog like that, then we just reduce their time outside and they have more playtime inside.
And all these folks are trained at handling dogs. And I'm just, I'm just bringing the dog bite issues.
So again, a lot of that is prevented, one, by the temperament testing, the evaluation that we do on the way in. Two, we are constantly evaluating how well they play together and shifting dogs between groups to find the right play group for them. And three, not all dogs are candidates for daycare. I mean, some dogs may be wonderful and they love people, but they don't love all their peers of dogs. And they just not, aren't, or they may need some kind of alternative for daycare, which is just, maybe they want to just come in and hang out, or they want one-on-one. So we kind of change that, almost like an individual education plan at a school. It's kind of the same thing. So we're constantly evaluating.
Okay, so it sounds like you have the potential nuisance complaint issue under control. Dogs barking. Certainly the odor. Safety of the dogs. It's all, I mean, none of these dogs will be visible to the traffic going by on Haynes Road. Does the fact that it's near 84 cause any kind of potential issue for the animal?
No. The, anytime that they're entering or leaving the building, they have to be in control on a leash. So just like as if you walked your dog down Haynes Street, it would be the same issue, people walking their dogs there. They're in control, there's not really a concern that they're going to run onto 84 at that point. I'm not really concerned about noise of the highway bothering the dogs. And I don't, and it's not loud enough that it's going to cause them to be louder. It's just kind of a background hum there.
Yeah, I mean, I kind of agree with the statement you made earlier that when dogs are engaged, they kind of focus on their object of engagement.
Right.
Right? Because I also take the train to, to Boston. And there's another doggy daycare, I think it's in Westboro, somewhere on the train, on the train line. And they don't even have a solid fence. It's a, what is it called?
Chain link.
Chain link.
Yeah.
You know, and when we go by, you see the dogs running, you know, playing. They don't even mind the train. And the trains are really loud, you know? But I've never seen them stop to stare at a train just because they have stuff that they're doing. So, so I think, you know, with the issue of noise, I, I don't think that's, that's going to be a problem. That's from, from my observation.
I love it. I mean, I, I think, I think this was one of the coolest presentations I've heard in my tenure on the Sony.
Pooping all?
Yeah, I mean, it's, 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 it's unique, it's creative. And I think you did a fabulous job presenting your case.
Thank you.
And I've certainly learned a lot.
I'm glad.
I got an aquarium.
Okay.
I can get a dog.
We don't, we don't have any abutters in the audience, do we?
Yeah, we have dogs. Oh, yes.
We have no abutters who want to speak for or against the project? Okay.
We haven't gotten, it's been on a butters list. Or does it require an abutters list?
It does, and a legal notice, which I know has been handled. Burton has the tear sheets in there, certified.
All right. So are there any other questions, comments, concerns?
Do we need any more information before we close the hearing? Or are we pretty much?
No, I, I-
Oh, yeah, there's a lot of that. Yeah, all the memos, right?
You can just say who they're from.
Jean covered her memo when she spoke about this, right? Is there anything more you want to say about, about your memo with the project on this?
No, I think she's done an excellent job in providing a very succinct narrative and application. She's been very good to work with. Any of the concerns staff had, she was addressed right away. And I think that I would recommend approval of the finding that it would not be any more detrimental to the neighborhood than the proposed use and also grant of the special permit.
Thank you, Jean. So got a memo, and Liz Banks mentioned this memo from- GPW Director Greg Morse, the eight items. And those have been, you're aware of that memo and these issues have been resolved? Okay. Mr. Brillengame, our Building Commissioner, dated March 8th, 2018. He's reviewed the file and the proposed change for the subject property. Based on the information supplied to this office, this appears to be no more detrimental than what exists. Have no objection to the project. I will need Chapter 34 review to see what building code regulations need addressing. Recommend the applicant proceed to acquire the necessary approvals. Economic and, economic development and tourism coordinator? We have one of those?
That's like a first, right?
I've never seen this. All right, this is great. At this time, I have no objections to the proposed project as it is presented in their application. That is from Kevin Filczak, MPA. Wow, very cool. Fire Department. After reviewing the plans presented for the property at One River Road, the Fire Department has no major concerns of non-conforming retail facility to a, this probably should be changing, to a non-conforming luxury full-service pet daycare training and grooming facility. Project's required to follow all state fire codes according to 527 CMR-1 and state building codes. The Fire Department will require a full set of blueprints and one set of plans on a thumb drive. Already done that one. So the health agent. Title V. So it's, it's about Title V, this memo's about Title V. It's dated March 2nd, 2018, from Bree. I'm terrible with names. Eichstad? Eichstad? What Rebecca said. Okay. Conservation Commission. The memo dated March 8th, 2018, from Rebecca Gendrow. You have a copy of that memo? Any questions regarding it? All right. So that's our correspondence regarding this project. Am I missing anything, folks?
I don't think so.
Nothing? All right. So at 7:30, are we ready to close the public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
All in favor of closing the public hearing? Okay. Five to nothing.
I, I actually just realized something. On the plan?
Do we have to reopen the public hearing?
No. It says, "I hereby certify that the notice of approval of this plan by the Charlton Planning Board was received." Shouldn't that say Sturbridge?
Yes. I will speak with Burton on that one. I didn't even notice that.
Especially since there's a signature line for the Sturbridge Town Clerk right underneath it.
Yeah, this one says Sturbridge Planning Board.
This one, I think she has a couple versions of the plan.
Yeah, I think the newest-
It's stated-
Oh, yes.
Right here.
Yes, okay. I will follow up with Burton Engineering to get you a new one tomorrow.
Can we amend that?
Thank you for noticing that.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
My print on that is, is microscopic.
Well, and sometimes when you see things over and over, you just whiz right by.
As amended in the meeting minutes regarding that.
Yes.
All right. So we've closed the public hearing, are we ready for a motion?
I could do that.
Okay. Go ahead.
In the matter of the request by Hadley Zabinski, Zabinski, of Charlton, for a special permit to allow the change of use for the property of One River Road to accommodate Pa Plaza, a doggy daycare facility, according to plans and specifications provided by Burton Engineering, dated 2/21/18. The Board of Appeals finds the following according to Chapter 24 of the zoning bylaw subsections A through HE. Would you like me to read those, Jean, or?
No. They need not be read.
Particularly that the use is not detrimental to the neighborhood. And my motion is that we find that, that we find that.
And also Section 20.05.
Section 20.05.
I don't know if she said that one.
Any discussion?
Any discussion?
Did someone second it?
Nobody's seconded yet, but I'll second it. Okay. All those in favor? All right. Congratulations.
Thank you, everyone.
We've got to do the other one.
Wait, 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 wait.
See, we just did a finding.
Okay.
We found that you're not detrimental. Now we have to award you a special permit.
Okay.
In view of the finding, which you will know, I move that a special permit be allowed for this project at One River Road as described in the findings suggested to all requests by town departments with respect to health, safety, and conservation. Anything else you need?
The plan entitled.
Plan, yeah.
All that stuff.
Date titled, wrote the thing.
Right, according to the plan.
Pa Plaza redevelopment prepared by, is it Burton Engineering?
Yes.
Project number 18-106.
Dated.
Dated, 2/21/18.
21/18. Project number. You already did the number, right?
Yeah. Came together as a team.
They did, and then the, the sentence in there about having to, why can't I remember it? They need to get all necessary permits, be obtained, and approval from all the other boards necessary.
All of their state and local approvals be granted.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? All right. Woo, woo, doggy daycare.
So I can thank you now? Thank you very much. Do you want one big copy delivered to you tomorrow? Okay. Thank you, appreciate it, Jean. That's okay, and we thought we were, um, well, Stephanie and I were across the street chatting. We thought it was across the street. And then we finally asked, we're like, oh my goodness, so we're jogging across the road. So I'm sorry about that.
This is the gas one?
So should we speak here for, is it 6:55 or 6:30 that it starts?
It starts at 6:30, but we can't remember the time. You don't need to go just- Got it, okay, thank you. See you tomorrow.
No, but we're getting, we're here.
Yeah, okay.
We think it could be overtime.
I don't see any people. Why does this say 6:55? This is 6:55. I'm going to switch it to this, it's supposed to be 7:00.
Actually, 7:30.
I'm saying that because it's the wrong time. Can I do that?
Yeah. Hello, Branches Special Power says the chair of the board. Are we just waiting for Rebecca?
Oh, go ahead.
All right. All right, so next on the list is the special permit, 234 and 236 Haynes Road, Route 15. Take it away, Liz Banks.
Okay. In accordance with the provisions of Mass General Laws, Chapter 40A, Section 11, the zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at the Center Office Building located at 301 Main Street on Wednesday, March 21st, 2018, at 7:30 PM. On the application of Petrogas Group New England, the application is requesting a special permit pursuant to Chapter 20, Section 20.05 and Section 24.09 of the zoning bylaws to allow for redevelopment and renovation of the pre-existing non-conforming retail gasoline service station and convenience store and former restaurant facility to a non-conforming gasoline service station, convenience- to a non-conforming gasoline service station, convenience store and fast food establishment. The property is located at 234 and 236 Haynes Street, Route 15. Copy of the application may be inspected at the office of the Town Clerk during regular business hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on this petition should appear at the time and place designated Board of Appeals.
Get that in there.
Yeah, I did.
So we have to hear this for our introductions?
I was here, but I would, to be honest, I was not paying attention. I was in the other room.
That's how you're going to open?
Meditating.
All right, fair enough. So we'll start off with introductions. Good evening, my name is Kevin Kelly.
I'm Tom Earls.
Liz Banks.
Fidelis Ombroque.
And Mike Young.
All right. So if you wouldn't mind introducing yourselves.
For the record, my name is Joshua Leesman. I'm outside counsel for Petrogas Group New England, Inc.
Good evening, Hussein Sevink, civil engineer with MHF Design Consultants.
Anybody else? That's it? Okay. All right. Well, welcome. And, I mean, you've certainly done this before, so I'm going to turn it over to you, kick this off, just lead us by the nose.
Okay. So, I'll try to be brief. Hopefully, the members are familiar with the site, or at least somewhat familiar with the site. My client Petrogas is looking to really revitalize and revive this site. As was mentioned in recitation of the application, this property is located off of Haynes Street, which is State Highway Route 15. This slide here shows the existing conditions of the site now. Just to get your bearings, this is Haynes Street here, and this is technically a corner lot. The other street running along here is Mashpag Road. In terms of the existing conditions of the site, this building right here is an existing mobile station. It's a gasoline service station which contains a mobile building. It's about 2,200 square feet, contains a convenience store use. This building over here, and also there is one canopy as well. This building over here, what I will refer to as the former Roy Rogers Building, the most recent occupants of this building, it's about 6,400 square foot building, were Roy Rogers and Sparrow, so two fast food service establishments. The property itself, the entire site is located what's in the SU zoning district, special use zoning district. It's not within any overlay districts, not with any floodplain districts, no aquifer protection districts. And the site itself is about 16 and a half acres in size. Over the years, the property has gone through various iterations of development. And as I said, most recently, the large building located at the site was most recently used as a fast food service establishment. But those uses have been, it discontinued for quite some time. This is some photographs of the existing building. This is the front view, if you're looking, if you're from Route 15 looking at the building. This is a side view over here. This is another angle, as you can see here. The site itself, the buildings located on the site, this existing building, the mobile building, the drive aisles, I'm sorry, yes.
Just curious, are you the, have you, how long have you owned this building? Is this brand new to you, or is this, has this been yours for a while? Just curious.
My client does not own, is not the title holder, but he has possessory rights by virtue of a lease.
Okay.
And in terms of how long, I think it's, it's been, I think, approximately a year.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
So here's a rendering of the conceptual plan. And again, just to get your bearings straight here, here's Route 15, here's Mashpag Road. This is, this here is the location where the existing mobile is located now. So under the project, what we are proposing to do is raise and demolish the existing mobile building and replace it in this area here with, this is one of the canopies. So two canopies will be installed to replace the one existing canopy. This is one canopy here, this will service diesel fuel vehicles. This is the other canopy located here. This former Roy Rogers building will, the footprint of this building will remain the same, except that there'll be a dramatic reskinning of the building. Improvements, renovations to both the exterior and interior portions of this, of this building. Now, the building will consolidate as a result of the demolition of the mobile, of the existing mobile building, which contains the convenience store as well as the gasoline service station uses. That use will be consolidated now into this Roy Rogers building. So this building will now contain the convenience store use, the gasoline service station use, as well as two fast food service establishments. As a result of the project, the parking will be reconfigured. The drive aisles will be reconfigured. I will also note that as part of one of the fast food establishments, there is also going to be a drive-through operation, which will work its way here. This is the queuing that will be serving for the, one of the fast food service establishments. The access ingress egress will be modified slightly. There is currently two full access ingress egress means to access the site, one on Mashpag Road and one on, along the state highway. The one along Mashpag Road will be converted to an access only. And the two access, the two existing access points along the Route 15 will be, one will be closed and consolidated into resulting in this ingress egress here. There'll be various improvements with respect to other utilities that are related in servicing the site, including stormwater facilities, the water supply and septic system. And so that, in a nutshell, covers the scope of the project. From a procedural standpoint, we filed our application with this board back in February. We also filed applications with the Planning Board, Design Review Committee and Conservation Commission. So tonight, we are here before you seeking a special permit for an extension of a pre-existing non-conforming uses and structures. So the uses, as I had mentioned, the zoning district in which the site is located is within this SU district, which prohibits or does not allow either by right or by special permit the uses that have most recently been used at this site, i.e. gasoline service station, fast food establishment, convenience store. However, as confirmed by the town, Ms. Bobon, as well as Nelson Burlingame, the uses are pre-existing non-conforming. The structures, the structural non-conformity pertains to the building as well as the parking and canopy setbacks. There is a minimum 100-foot setback from the street, the front yard setback. And currently, the building, the existing canopy and the parking, none of them comply with that 100-foot setback. As a result of the project, as I said, the footprint of the existing Roy Rogers Building is not going to be modified. So there'll be no further encroachment into the, that front yard setback. The new canopies that are being proposed will actually result in a much farther setback into the site. In other words, less of an encroachment into the prohibited front yard setback as a result of the project. And so that is the relief that we're seeking with respect to the special permit in terms of the use and the structures, both of which are pre-existing non-conforming. Our view is that the project is not going to be more detrimental than the pre-existing non-conforming uses of the site. They are going to be in essence the same uses, it's just going to be enhanced. The building is going to be dramatically improved. The elevation. The new building, as I said, is going to be renovated from top to bottom. It is going to be redesigned. The new design is much more consistent with the architectural features of other light buildings in the town. I'll point to the recently approved Panera Project as one example. The Design Review Committee was more than satisfied with the proposed design and approved both the design of the building as well as the design of the signs that are being proposed as part of this project. So as you can see, it's a clear enhancement of the visual and aesthetic appeal of this site and an improvement of the existing building. Moreover, if you've seen the mobile building and you've seen the mobile canopy that's there now, they are beyond dilapidated. They are in need of, they are in disrepair and they are in need of replacement. Those will also be enhanced, they'll be modernized to the current day standard for gasoline service station type structures and facilities. Obviously, as well, the other gasoline-related facilities that are going to be replaced and upgraded include the fuel pumps themselves as well. So I guess I'll stop there and open it up to any questions that the board may have.
All right. So, right now, that existing site seems to be, there seems to be a lot of tractor-trailer truck traffic coming in and out. Tractor-trailer trucks parking and getting their rest hours in and that kind of thing. Couple of questions. Can you talk to me a little bit about whether or not this project takes into consideration that tractor-trailer truck traffic? That's number one. And number two, can you talk to us a little bit more about parking?
Sure. With respect to the tractor-trailer parking, we do have designated spaces for those uses as indicated in the upper right corner of the site.
Five spots.
Five spots?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
And as far as, as far as parking for the restaurants and the convenience stores?
As will all other dimensional-related requirements under the zoning bylaw. So in terms of, there are obviously a number of different uses, each of which have different formulas that result in a minimum parking number. And so as a result of the project, based on the proposed uses, the number of parking spaces that are being provided will comply with those minimum requirements.
So we require 44. All right. We'll open it up to the board. Tom, you want to get us kicked off?
It's going to change the traffic in that area in view of the fact that you're expecting to have a lot more diesel traffic than currently you do. I mean, there's been five parking spaces there for a long time and there's the one diesel pump in the back. Meanwhile, down the street, there's the big diesel place and the restaurant and the other facilities that go with it. You're expecting people to come off your trucks now, to come off the highway just by gas and go back. Or, so that's the business plan? As opposed to the business plan down the street is to have them parked there for two hours, take a nap. And maybe your business plan is that these people are going to come in, buy the gasoline, maybe walk over to the restaurants or convenience store and then exit, pretty much, because you've got five parking spaces, right? And that's the only parking spaces that they will use, pretty much, right? There's no other place for them. Okay, I'm just, I'm trying to get a feel for the business plan.
The business plan does not contemplate, this is not intended to be a truck stop.
Yes, I understand, I understand.
Or a rest area for truckers. It's intended to be a mixed-use site for patrons who want to, who need to fuel up. And while they're fueling up, maybe either get a cup of coffee, get a, go to the convenience store, get a pack of whatever and
And then they're on their way.
Eat at whatever fast food establishments, and then they're on their way.
Okay.
But along that one, what's your, what's the, I mean, you're onto, I think, do you have a zoning-related or a use-related or a detrimental concern?
It's going to be different, there's going to be traffic in and out of there than there currently is. You're going to, how many, six pumps now? Right now, there's one diesel pump in the back. There's going to be six, so there's going to be a significant amount more of the truck traffic. And the truck traffic goes through the smaller canopy and then turns left and comes back out.
Correct.
Is that right? And I'm thinking they can park in there long enough to go next door and get something to eat or drink. So their stay is going to be five or 10 minutes, that's it, and then they're back out. It's going to increase the traffic out onto the street, coming and going. That's one thing. I just noticed that there's, the Mashpag Road is now just an exit? There was some difficulty with that years and years ago.
Currently, we could do.
I'm sorry.
There was some difficulty with that years ago and I was one of the people that objected to it because I went in and out of there all the time, to that convenience store, to that gas station. And I could see, take that off the notes, that people, cars, automobiles should be able to get out of there. Because there's traffic, there's local traffic that uses that convenience store and goes into Southbridge and Mashpag Road. And instead of sending them out onto the highway again and then back down Mashpag Road, to be able to keep that open for exit would be one of the things I would want to see in this plan.
So that would mean full ingress egress along both streets?
Yes. And at one point, during one of the iterations of this, where they got in front of the town, they were asked to put a bollards to protect, to prevent the trucks from coming in that entrance. And what happened was trucks wanted to go down Mashpag Road four miles to find a place to turn around and come back. And anyway, I just, I'd rather see that left as it is.
All right, I just want to get this in my head.
Because I think I missed that. So at this particular point, on this proposed plan, the Mashpag Road, that is, as planned, it's just an entrance. There's no entrance and exit on Mashpag Road.
Correct, as proposed, correct.
It's the principal truck entrance. It is the way trucks get in there now.
Okay, they come around there, okay.
Just can come out here.
So, right. So, again, I'm just trying to get this conceptually in my head. What was, from an engineering standpoint, or a site design standpoint, why Mashpag Road being only an entrance? How is that, I guess, beneficial or more safe for those that use Mashpag Road to drive or?
Is there a reason to?
There was no, there was no reason for it to be a one-way, I think.
Okay.
That might have, the intent is to have two-way there for residential customers and the truck traffic.
So there will be two-way there? Because I understand that coming in off of Mashpag Road, and I agree with Tom, I mean, that's, that's, I think, where most people come off the highway, they get down, they get down Mashpag Road, they take a left and they go into it. And I could see a thought process of just keeping the traffic moving in, say, you know, one direction, the truck traffic in one direction. They come in, they fill up, they stop, they use the restroom, they buy a Whappa and then they're out the Haynes Road entrance. So I understand that. But I just wanted to kind of understand why that is more or less beneficial.
There was no rhyme or reason to why it was designated as a one-way entrance, just for the flow of trucks coming into the site and then having all trucks leave the site from Haynes Road.
Okay.
It seems safer if it was one-way in.
No.
To me, that would be safe.
No, because then you've got to send. No, because then you've got to send all the cars that want to go down Mashapog Road back out onto the highway, back out through the main entrance and turn them around and send them down Mashapog Road.
And go out.
Except that there are people coming into the entrance from the main entrance. And for, for automobile traffic, they can be entering from Mashapog Road, which is safer than entering from the highway. That's what I'm thinking.
And by highway, you mean?
What do you mean by highway? Route fifteen?
Haynes Road.
Which is forty or fifty miles an hour. Yes.
Drive very fast, Tom.
We'd be amenable to, to keeping it full, as a full access point.
I would say just discuss it.
Yeah, that's going to be the planning board's going to decide that anyway.
Okay. What else you got, Tom?
I, I was curious about the sixty seats in the restaurant. Are those, is that enough for what you're planning in the building? And, and does it include seating outside?
It does. There's, well, it's sixty-one seats. There was a typo and something. Well, the zoning table shows sixty-one seats. So there are sixteen exterior outdoor seats and forty-five.
Forty-five inside.
Yep.
Okay, and that's a function of the parking too, right?
Yeah.
The whole, okay. At one point, I saw a drawing that had a, uh, you've widened the, the, um, the path behind the building to a car width and then there's a truck width. Is that with the additional?
It's a bypass lane, correct. So behind, so there's the drive-through lane, which is a twelve-foot drive-through lane, and then there's a sixteen-foot, basically a bypass lane. And the only trucks that we're, we're proposing back there are delivery trucks.
Okay.
And the trash truck.
Okay. I thought at first when I looked at it.
There was a, there was a truck turning plan that showed a delivery truck can make that movement for, you know, Burger King deliveries, convenience stores.
When I looked at it, I thought it was a pickup window truck. No, okay. Okay, I understand. Uh, that's, um, well, I'm just suggesting that there's going to be a lot more diesel traffic than there is now. It's marketed that way. It has to be that way.
Currently, there's one fuel dispenser in the back. You can fuel on both sides. This configuration, even though there's four fuel dispensers, you can only fuel three vehicles. So this, this would be one fueling lane. This would be the second. This would be the third. So no fueling on the outer dispensers.
Okay.
They would just be blanks.
Okay. I'm good.
All right, Tom. Thank you. Liz Banks.
So is five parking spaces for the tractor trailers?
There are.
Is that, is that, okay. And, um,
And/or buses.
Buses, yeah. Or big RVs or whatever. And you are, you did address all the concerns of the other boards when?
There, there were a number of, um, uh, staff memoranda that were circulated.
Yeah.
We were pleased to see the comments that were provided. Um, we did respond to the tree warden's comments, uh, which obviously were mostly focused on landscaping and trees, vegetation. And so as a result of that response that we provided, I believe that the tree warden was satisfied.
Yeah.
There were a number of, of other comments. I think probably they were either.
DPW might have had some.
DPW Conservation Agent, uh, Please Fire, Nelson Burlingame, David Blessing. Obviously, the DPW comments, uh, Conservation Agent were, uh, comments that we'll be further addressing when we get to the planning board.
Well, I guess, is, is that going to be enough parking spaces for buses or tractor trailers? I guess that's your business. You would know, but it doesn't seem like a lot.
It's not a lot. The goal wasn't to make it a truck stop per se, but just something to accommodate trucks.
Okay.
Those are there now. They've been there for a long time. And the long-term parking is the other place down the hill.
No, well, when I went to the site, there was actually a tractor trailer there.
Oh, yeah.
Doing whatever. But, um, what was I going to say? It appears to have a lot more parking and, than some of the other, uh, convenience restaurant, gas stations that are in town. This has diesel, which I don't think the others may or may not have. So I, I don't have any other questions.
Okay, thanks, Liz. Fidelis.
Yeah, so, um, I think I'm happy to see the project. You know, that's another building I drive past every Saturday, at least once a week. So, um, currently, you know, like you said, there, there's one diesel pump at the back and I, I've got diesel from there as well. So, I know. So Route fifteen is, is busy, but it's not that busy. You know, like I said, I drive, I, I drive by there, you know, every once in a while. I don't think I've seen more than two, um, more than two trucks personally parked in that, in that back section there. So I really don't have, um, I like it, you know? I, I really don't have any, any, any questions for, for them.
Okay. Michael Faravion.
That was when I woke up this morning. Uh, I, I think it's a great project. It's going to be a huge improvement over what's there now. And it's really going to look, uh, very good. The only thing that comes up with trucks, everybody's always concerned about trucks, um, and I, I would just maybe make a recommendation that you might want to consider, uh, time limits on those parking spots. I think that would probably be good. Uh, I know we have a, a real truck stop a quarter of a mile up the road, but, um, whether it's appropriate to have like a thirty-minute limit or forty-five minute limit, uh, I wouldn't really know, but you would probably want to have a time limit on those five spots, uh, so that somebody doesn't fall asleep and end up there for an hour or two hours. Especially if they're going to have their engine running, the usual truck stop stuff. I wouldn't make that a condition of approval, but I would just suggest that you would consider that.
Thank you, Michael. Bus traffic, I, I think this is going to be off the hook, uh, with, with buses pulling in and out of there. It was, when it was Sabaro's and Roy Rogers', uh, there was a lot of bus traffic. I mean, I, I can't remember times when I wouldn't pass by that site and not see a bus. And I frequented Sabaro's and Roy Rogers' when I was there. Now, what are the restaurants that are going to be going in there?
Burger King and Subway.
Burger King and Subway.
Well, four Subways.
What's that?
That'll be four Subways in town.
We've got to eat better. And, and, and now you've got the casino coming in in Springfield, uh, and you're going to have people, you know, coming back and forth from Worcester and Boston to get out to the casino. A lot of bus traffic and, uh, I think it's a fantastic project. And everything that I've seen in the documentation and the comments, it's, it, it looks great. It's, uh, certainly an enhancement, uh, to what is currently there. Um, I, I guess my, my only concern is this bus traffic and, and I think you hit it huge here. Because it's going to be, I mean, Sturbridge is the crossroads. Everybody comes through and, um, this is going to be mega-successful. And, you know, whether or not you have enough space and enough planning and enough parking for the amount of traffic that I, I, I think you're going to see. That's, I mean, that's the issue. And that means buses coming in, buses pulling out.
More than when Spyro and, and Roy Rogers were operating there?
I think so. I mean, this is great. It's, uh, I, I do, I, I think you, I think you, you hit it huge and I think you're going to see a, you know, casino wasn't up. Casino's coming in next year in Springfield. So you're going to have additional traffic just based on that. You know, granted, they got to pull off the Mass Pike and they got to get on eighty-four, but they're going to do that.
It could be coming from eighty-four to the Mass Pike.
They could. You're absolutely right. So that's, I, I guess, I guess that's, and it, and it ties into the whole detrimental aspect of, you know, is there, I mean, there probably has been enough pro-formers done and forethought done into, you know, how often that your business is going to be used. I, I think it's, I think it's a hit. And whether or not that's going to create traffic issues and people complaining and Mashapog Road, you know, issues, you know, that kind of thing. That, that's my only, what I got percolating in my small brain.
Well, there was a traffic study done. Um, we do plan on addressing those types of comments as, not only to, to this board, to the extent you have those comments, but also the planning board is, we're expecting the planning board to fully vet this project with respect to noise, traffic, uh, lighting, other impacts. But I, I would say that this, this project is, uh, in, in opposite of it being detrimental to the neighborhood. I think it's been echoed among the members here. This is, uh, it's, it's a, right now, it's really a blight, uh, to the neighborhood, I'd say.
No question.
And so this is, uh,
That's not what I'm saying. I'm just, I'm, I'm more concerned about, uh, the impact on, on traffic and whether that has been, you know, fully vetted with what's going on in Western Mass, with the casino and all that. That's all. I mean, it, it totally agree with you. It's, 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 it's certainly an enhancement to the neighborhood.
Well,
As far as the structure and the building and the architecture goes, yeah, I, I just, uh, I just have a, a sort of a question about whether it's been well pre-planned for traffic impacts.
Yeah. Well, inherently, based on the design that, that has been approved by our designers and engineers, we're only willing to accommodate a, a limited amount of spaces for buses, for trucks. So to the extent that they can't be accommodated, then they'll have to go somewhere else.
Yeah, but therein lies the problem. And it goes to what Tom Earls was saying about, you know, driving, you know, miles down this winding country Mashapog Road, you know, looking for a turnaround on River Road or something along those lines. But that's a planning, I, I get it. It's a planning, it's a planning board issue. So.
Uh, one last. What was the, the, uh, I'm trying to get at, the general change in the front of the, the whole front of the project has gone from two entrances to one.
Oh, the driveways?
Yes, yeah.
Oh, driveways, not the building.
Driveways to one. And, um, right now, the, the truck traffic coming out of the pumps is going to be, uh, coming up, going out the right, well, the left-hand side here. But all the tr- car traffic coming in is going to turn left and cross over in front of the path of the trucks. Is that acceptable? Do we think that's acceptable? Are the trucks far enough apart and going slowly enough so that no one has to give it a second thought? Or is that a concern?
They're, they're, they will be pulling out at a slower pace than, you know, they would be if, if the diesel canopy were further back. So they would be pulling out and making that turn at this location. As part of this, you know, we, we were thinking of putting, you know, stop, a stop bar, maybe a stop sign in this area for trucks. So I, I believe that is going to be discussed again with, with the planning board for signage, just trying to get people in and out of the site safely.
And the only other thing, I would, I would take up the bus thing a little bit and see. I just, no, that's all. I, I think it's, I think both of those are good questions. One is, uh, the bus truck traffic and, um, and the bus question.
All right. Anybody else have any further questions?
Uh, just wondering if there's anybody in the room who has any comments, any citizens, residents or whatever?
Great question, Michael Young. Anybody have any questions, comments, concerns? No, okay. And then as far as correspondence, Fidelis, I'm sorry, go ahead.
One comment, you know, um, personally, I think that's plenty of space for, um, for the trucks, right? Because when Cumberland was, um, you know, when that whole thing on, on Route, on Route, uh, twenty was, you know, that was recently upgraded.
Right.
You know, and you have way less space than you do on this one. And, you know, they have diesel there and you have those trucks coming in because they buy gas from there. And, you know, you still have, you still have enough space and it's, that lot size is way smaller than, than this one. So, I understand that, you know, coming in from there and, you know, going left and then you have the trucks coming from, from the right. I understand in terms of flow, it looks kind of awkward, but because of the speed at which the trucks are coming, like, like you said, I don't think that's going to be an issue from my perspective.
Yes, and they're not going to be coming by. And it's not like being on the highway. It's going to be one truck at a time and, okay. Under consideration. I was wondering, are there enough, uh, parking spots straight in for the, uh, the convenience store, which is going to be at that end of the building? There's two handicap spots which, uh, and then there's one, two, three, four, five, or six.
Six customer, yep.
Is that enough?
Six regular spaces. And then there's, there's parking along the entire front of the building.
If you go to the other side, yeah.
I have parking at the back as well, right?
On the side here, yep.
There are two means of ingress egress to the building as well. One along,
On that side, yeah.
Yeah, one on the front and one on the, on the right.
So the number of gas pumps has been increased from eight, right? The, the existing mobile has eight.
They have four pumps for, um, retail fuel. Four pumps, eight fueling positions.
Yeah.
We're going to six pumps, twelve fueling positions. And there would be diesel offered at the retail. These two islands in the back would have diesel as well.
All right. Any other questions? No, we're ready to close the public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
All those in favor? Okay, the public meeting is hereby closed. All right. So now the question is, what are we going to do about it?
Well, we need a finding. I could do that.
Actually, I got to do the, uh, I need to do the, um, correspondence.
What do we need to do?
Counsel had, uh, mentioned that he has all correspondence. I don't think we need to go through it. Fair? You had mentioned, sir, that you had, uh, all, all of the correspondence from the, the fire department, the town planner, all of that.
Okay.
You're not going to let him get away with anything, Gene.
No, we try not to.
So we'll just stipulate to have all the correspondence.
Who is the actual, um,
Wait, we, we just closed the public hearing?
We did.
Petrogas.
It's Petrogas.
Yes.
All right. So Tom, I understand that, uh, you want to go three for three. You want the hat-trick to them?
I had nothing to do the whole weekend.
No, I, I know. Very good.
I actually.
Chomping at the bit.
Actually, just, you know, before, I, I just want to make one more comment, right? Because I've been, could you, could you just move that, move it from, okay, so the trucks are going to be backing into the parking, right? All right. So I don't know, i- i- is, is there a safety issue there? I mean, do they need to have like, um, a safety issue there? I mean, do they need to have, like, like the poles?
No, they've been doing it for years.
Well...
It's really, it's, I don't know how wide those are. Are those twelve feet wide?
Fifteen, fifteen foot wide.
Fifteen foot wide.
Okay.
Yeah, they've been doing that up there for a long time. Okay.
All right. So, we're gonna entertain a motion.
Yes, I'm gonna propose a finding. In the matter of the request by Petrogas, Petrogas Group or Group of New England LLC...
Uh, I'm sorry, Inc.
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 Big difference.
To allow the continuation of the special use of the property at, is it ten Mashapog Road, uh, two four, two thirty-four, two thirty-six?
Correct.
Haines Road.
Two thirty-four and two thirty-six.
Haines Road.
Haines, Haines Street.
Haines Street. I took some of this information off of...
So, what are the proposals?
Anyway, Haines Street. As a travel plaza with restaurants and a convenience store and gasoline and diesel fuel stations, according to plans provided by Petrogas Group dated two twenty eighteen, the Board of Appeals finds the following. Let's do this for me.
Uh, sure. But can I back up one part? We used to the proposal by the applicant to dump, allow the demolition and removal of the existing mobile building and canopy, renovation of exterior and interior components of the mixed-use building to accommodate the gasoline service station and convenience store will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing in accordance with special, with section twenty-four point oh nine A through E and section twenty point oh five of the Sturbridge zoning bylaws. So, will not be more detrimental.
And that's our complete motion?
For the findings.
For the findings.
Okay. Okay.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? There being none. All those in favor? Okay. Part two.
In view of these findings, I move that a special permit be awarded for this project at two thirty-four to two thirty-six Haines Road as described in the finding.
Street.
Street, street. As described in the finding, subject to all requests by town departments with respect to health, safety, and conservation and applicable state and local laws. Anything else?
You reference the plan.
Yep, subject, oh.
Oh.
Want me to say that part?
Yes, please.
Subject to all, subject to approval by all other relevant boards or departments and all permits must be received prior to construction.
You got the plans and date?
Plans and date. Do I get, I, me?
As, as described on site plan from Petrogas Group, New England, dated February twentieth two thousand eighteen, their project number four one nine two one seven.
I'll second that.
Can we...
Was it one fifteen eighteen or is that, is there a more updated one? What, I didn't hear what he said.
As revised.
Three twenty-one, I think.
Take me through that.
And then, three...
Oh, you know what? I took it off of this. That project number came from this sheet.
We have so many.
There's a revised date.
Is there a revision? No, provision one, provision two.
Provision one.
Provision one.
February twentieth? What's the date?
It is February twentieth.
Yeah.
It is February twentieth? It's this one? This is February twentieth?
Yeah.
It was prepared by Francie Montero Civil Engineering, number three six three four one. This must be a revision, right? Is this a revise?
So, the, the one you have is...
This is page five of fourteen.
Don't say any revision.
So, the only revision was when we submitted to planning board, we moved, we added a propane. I don't know if your plan showed propane tanks in this area or transformer pad.
So, do we have the most up-to-date?
You have the most up-to-date plan for your needs. The revision really pertain to site plan approval. So...
All right. We have, we have the plan that we are relying on for...
Yes.
In the meeting minutes.
Which one is it?
So, the one we have.
The one dated two twenty.
The one that you have.
The one we have.
And the project references the number on the bottom of the drawing, right? That'll be site plan times.
That's our internal project number, yeah.
Four one nine two one seven.
Yeah, okay.
Rebecca, did you get all that?
Of course.
Okay. Uh, so...
We have a motion made and seconded.
We had a second. Any discussion? There being none. All those in favor? Okay.
Those beasts saved Mike.
I thought there was a third.
Sir. Oh, go forth and prosper.
Exactly. Oh, thank you.
Go on.
Sorry? Oh, I thought he had mentioned that there were three motions.
No, only two.
Okay. All right, we're good with two. We got the...
You're good.
Thank you, thank you very much for, I know this is not a regularly scheduled meeting.
Right.
Right, so...
Good presentation.
Very good.
We tried to make it happen.
We did. It was Michael Young.
Can any one of you use this?
Yes.
You need some?
Okay.
What actually happened?
All right, good luck, folks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. You're very welcome.
You're out.
All right.
Uh, this is the other part.
You all right, Rebecca? You got a Patagonia model there. All right, we got one more.
One of you almost didn't make it tonight.
Cancelled something.
But I made it.
We think one coming from Cambridge?
Yep.
Well, thank you for coming.
Try to make things happen.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Figured Petrogas could afford to send the helicopter.
Really appreciate it. Okay, fair.
Good night.
Okay, up next is, and we're, I'm sorry that we're running behind.
All right.
Uh, we have a determination of forty-seven Seneca Lane. George and Rebecca Condillis, raise of single-family home and garage and rebuild on new foundation. You may have the introductions, right?
What's that?
You know who we are, right? All right. So, if you wouldn't mind introducing yourself and, and laying it out for us.
I'm George Condillis. I'm the applicant and owner of forty-seven Seneca Lane. So, this is relatively simple and straightforward. It's raising and rebuilding an existing older home and garage. The entirety of the project is demo and rebuilding the home and the garage on new foundations, repairing retaining walls, filling in an old shallow well that's not functioning, and adding a drilled well that would be new, and also placing a, a cultech system for all the roof drainage to get back into the ground to dry it off. It would be rebuilding it on the existing footprint, not going any larger. And actually, with the current architectural plans, this bump out would no longer be there. So, it would actually be on a smaller footprint.
Okay. All right. All right. Any questions from the board? Tom?
Not at this time, no. Go ahead, I gotta...
All right, so...
I hate to use the, can I take a break?
You can do whatever you want, Tom. Um, so, a lot of coverage. I mean, it's just a, it's a minimal increase.
Want me to ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, on the side, if you're facing your house, the side to the left?
If you're standing.
If you're facing a lake?
Yep.
Are you sharing that driveway or roadway?
It is, it's a shared drive.
Yeah, okay. Cause you had it marked on the other side and then there was, like, no markings and it looked like you both used the same parking lot and driveway.
It's one shared drive and then just a large parking area.
Okay.
And actually, I didn't mention one other, probably the most important thing. What's, what's here currently off the back of the house is a concrete pad on the ground. That would be removed. There'll be a new patio placed with a deck above it. The deck would be the same width as the house except for...
In the back?
In the back. If you're facing the water, the right-hand side would be stairs coming down, and those stairs would encroach on a setback eighteen inches as you get down towards the bottom of the stairs. But the deck itself would be within the regulations.
The stairs are the same width as the house, right?
The deck is the, well, the deck and stairs are the same width as the house.
Yeah.
With the side of it being the stairs coming down.
Okay, yeah, okay.
And as you get down to the bottom, just because it's set off at an angle, the very bottom of the stairs would be within that setback eighteen inches.
Summer place or year-on?
It will be built as a year-on place. As of right now, it will be a summer place for a few years.
Okay. Your intent is to eventually move from...
Eventually, yeah, use it as a, as a year-on home for us.
Fidelis, any questions?
So, I mean, he's here because of the setback, right? Cause I'm, you know, I look at everything. Everything isn't, everything is, you know, in check with the exception of the rear setback.
Rear setback, that's correct.
No, no questions.
Michael?
I have no questions. It's a simple, straightforward project as near as I can see.
I agree. Thomas, you are, you're back.
By the way, that garage will be a huge improvement over the garage that's there now. Whatever you put for a garage.
Oh, yeah. I think animals call that home now.
One side setback is a little close. We know that, right? Fourteen?
Yeah, that, that bump out that's there will no longer be there.
That's gonna be gone.
That's gonna be gone to make it symmetrical.
Given your, is this as much as you wanna do?
Yes.
Okay. And I don't have any questions. I think we're good.
Okay. What's that?
I'd say you go for it. I mean, you got it all right.
I'll chime in if you make a mistake.
I love this team approach.
Correspondences, are you?
Oh, yeah, correspondence. Fidelis, can you handle the correspondence, please? Seriously, I'm, I'm, I'm all disorganized here.
Uh, okay, let's see what we have. Oh, thank you. So, we have a memo dated March sixth from...
Gregory Moss.
From Gregory Moss. Says, uh, the DPW has reviewed the plan submitted, existing grade, Inc., dated ten, ten twenty-seven, two thousand seventeen, on behalf of George Condillis, and offer the following for your files. Item one, the project involves demolition of the existing structure and thus the removal of the EO pump control box. The control box has electrical, the control box and electrical cord must be salvaged prior to the home demolition and retained for reuse in a clean, dry location. Failure to do so will require the owner to pay for full replacement cost and should this step not be followed. Um, doesn't say. So, item two, removal and replacement of the sanitary sewer line from home to the existing pump must be inspected and an amp draw test completed on the pump prior to use by town personnel. We have another memo from the Conservation Commission dated March eighth. Said the Sturbridge or the S, the SCC has previously received and reviewed a notice of intent for this project. The project includes the, includes the raise and rebuild of a single-family house and garage, construction of a, of a patio and deck, installation of a temporary dock and associated site work, including tree trimming and retaining wall repairs. Work is proposed within jurisdiction, resource areas, and within jurisdictional buffer zones subject to protection under the Wetlands Protection Act and the Sturbridge Wetlands by law. As the SCC's March first meeting, commissioners approve the project as shown on the submitted plan. Will be issuing orders of conditions for this project in the near future. Thank you for the opportunity. And I will have another from the Sturbridge Fire Department dated February twenty-eighth. After reviewing the plans presented for, for the property at forty-seven Seneca Lane, the fire department has no major concerns on demolishing the existing single-family residence and garage and rebuilding on the existing footprint on a new foundation. The owner of the property will install smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors in accordance with the state laws. The house numbers must be posted and visible from the street in accordance with the Town of Sturbridge General Bylaw, section seven seventy, building numbering. Please feel free to contact me should you have any further questions. And that's from John Martinelli. Another memo from the Board of Health dated March eighth. As a health agent for the Town of Sturbridge, I offer the following comments regarding the property at forty-seven Seneca Lane. This property is served by a well at existing shallow well... Oh, this property is, is serviced by a well and the existing shallow well is being removed. A well distribution destruction permit will be required to remove the well. A well drilling application will be required for the proposed well. An application and a plot plan showing all required setbacks shall be submitted to this office. An application can be found on our website or by following or by stopping by the office. Please note, there is a fifteen foot setback from any well and a, and a property line. On the proposed, on the proposed plan submitted, there is only a ten-foot setback from the property line. Please refer to the Sturbridge well regulations for further details and information regarding the local well regulations. And the final memo is from the Sturbridge Police Department dated March fifteenth. And it says, I have reviewed this request for determination. I have no public safety concerns with this project, with this request. Please feel free to call upon... upon me should you need additional information. Thank you. And that's it for the memos.
Did I hear a memo from Gene?
Yes, you do have one for me. I have no concerns with the proposal.
Okay. All right. Are we, are we ready to entertain a motion? You want to do it or?
Sure.
All right. Go for the quarfecta.
In the matter of, of George and Rebecca Condilis, Condilis.
Close.
As shown.
We apologize.
That's right.
It's happened before.
As shown on plan 1749 dated October 27th, drawn by existing, existing what? What's that word?
Yeah. Existing grade.
Grade, existing grade incorporated of Douglas, Mass. For a request for determination to demolish and rebuild a home and garage at 47 Seneca Lane, the zoning board finds that the project creates no new non-conformity. And as such, we will, we grant the determination. Subject to.
Oh, subject to approval by all of the boards or departments relevant, all of the relevant boards or departments and all permits must be received prior to construction.
All right.
Anything else?
All right.
What about, did he say all the plans and all that?
Yes.
I did read the plans, yes.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Second?
That it? All second?
Any discussion? There being none. All those in favor? Fantastic. Congratulations.
Okay.
Go forth and prosper.
Go forth and prosper.
All right. So now we have old and new business. Any, any old business? There being none. Any new business?
What do you want this?
No new business. All right. Then that being the case, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Well, I was just going to say. You're not, are you going to be with us after this? Is this your last meeting?
This, this apparently, this could be my last meeting.
Well, in that case, I just would like to thank you for all your years of service. You served quite a few years and then you took a little break.
Yeah.
And then you came back, thank goodness. And we appreciate all the years of service that you've given to the Town of Sturbridge on the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Well, thank you very much. It's, this has been a great board. And we, we do very important and great work. And, you know, if I'm not back, then I am gonna, I'm gonna miss you all. I think you guys are fantastic ZBA members and I, I really appreciated your hospitality, hospitality and allowing me to lead the ZBA. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you, Kevin.
All right. And Gene, thank you for everything you've done. And Rebecca, we couldn't have, we wouldn't be here without you. So on that note, we can close out.
Motion? Did we do the motion?
Yeah, we did.
Yeah.
Wasn't that entertaining?
All in favor?
Wait, motion to adjourn? What do you call it?
I thought, I thought we, so motion to adjourn.
Adjourn.
I second.
Well, we didn't make the, we didn't follow through yet on the vote.
All right, I thought we did. I'm sorry. Yeah. All those in favor?
I interrupted it.
All those in favor? All right, thank you very much.
Okay. Was a good evening.